This conference will now be recorded.
2020, regular council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I'm looking out my window at a beautiful American flag. I'm going to stand up and recite the Pledge of Allegiance if you care to join me. My Pledge of Allegiance to the five United States of America, and to the Republic of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? If not, would like, somebody like to make a motion to accept the agenda?
Point of order question? So, we are having these meetings and moving straight into, you know, additions or corrections to an agenda. Because we are not here in person, is this something we should be actually doing a roll call of attendance at the beginning of these meetings?
We certainly can.
Susan, are you saying that for the, for the public's perspective? Because when each of you calls in and she marks you, that's kind of a roll call. Do you think it needs to be done for the public, or?
In all honesty, I think it needs to be done as part of the meeting because, um, it just, it just, I don't know that there's a rule or law that states that. It just seems to me that that is something we should be doing in order to incorporate it into the beginning of the meeting as we are, we're in attendance at 7 o'clock. Just like when you do the attendance and it shows that we, um, you know, if somebody comes in late, what time they come in. It's just something I wanted to bring forth.
Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, I'd ask that you call the roll of those attendants.
Okay, I'm going to ask Stephanie to call the roll, please.
Okay, um, I'll say your name and then just declare if you're here, please. Mayor Hobart?
Here.
Counselor Allen?
Present.
Counselor Wagner?
Present.
Counselor McNair?
Counselor McNair is present.
Counselor Webb?
Present.
Staff in attendance, Josette Mitchell?
Here.
Chief Connor? He's here but muted. Um, Stephanie Borst, I'm here. We also have Scott Laird with the media here. And that completes roll call.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? If not, I'd like to ask for a, a motion to accept the agenda.
Make a motion that we accept the agenda as written. Counselor McNair.
Is there a second?
Counselor Webb, seconds.
Okay, I'll call voting.
Call roll, thank you.
Yep. Uh, Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. There are no, there are no presentations tonight. And we move on to the mayor's report. Um, about a week and a half ago, I participated in a teleconference with the governor. And there were about 430, uh, mayors and councils and, and people with authority on the call. And I was able to submit two questions and the, the conference call was mediated by, um, a person from Lake of Cities. And so he, they had taken questions the, the day prior. And also during the teleconference, they took questions and, um, one of my questions, uh, he took and asked the governor towards the end of the call. And my question was, with a small community like Vernonia with zero positives, within a county with very low positives, how do we begin our Phase One process, entering into the Phase One process, um, to open back up? And she gave me several, her first response to my question was, um, getting in contact with the Columbia County, um, she didn't say Columbia County, but the county health officials and, and, and also having your proper PP&amp;E in place. And, and your, she talked quite a bit about testing and trace testing and, and having that in place in the hospital. So shortly after the call, I, well, the next couple of days, I, I did call the Columbia County, Director Michael Paul and had a nice conversation with him. And, and he kind of recommended that I get ahold of, of our commissioners, which I did. And Margaret called me back on Saturday and we talked a little bit about, uh, the path forward. And when I did talk to Mr. Paul, he, we only have 14 positives in our, in the Columbia County. And 12 of those 14 have recovered. So as a county, we're, our numbers are very, very low. And so we're doing really good. I did talk to Margaret on Saturday, like I said, and she, uh, talked, the problem they're having now entering this Phase One is there's no hospitals in Columbia County. So they're having to kind of, uh, go with the hospital in Multnomah County, which is, is kind of a problem because they, they have a lot of high, quite a bit more numbers than we do, positives. So, um, of course, we haven't been given a date yet from our governor, but she did mention something about the 15th of May. So I don't know what, whether we're going to be able to open up, uh, some of our restaurants then or not. But anyway, I just wanted to give you an update. I did talk to the city administrator and she said she's been in contact with Mr. Paul also. And the, and I think you had a conference call with, uh, some of the commissioners, didn't you, Josette?
Uh, yes, with the commissioners and the city managers.
Oh, city managers, yeah. So anyway, just kind of wanted to bring everyone up on, up to par as to what's going on. We don't really know yet. But that's about all I, all I have on my report. Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Councilman McNair, I don't have any questions, but I applaud you for being proactive.
Oh, thank you, Bruce. I try to stay on top of things and, and, um, I will report, um, shortly af, well, the day after we closed the fishing, I've been kind of keeping an eye on, on the activity down there. And it really, it really has worked well as far as the, uh, in my personal opinion, it really wasn't about the fishing. It was more about numbers. And you saw, we saw quite a decrease in, in visitors, uh, from out of town. So I think it really made a difference. But yeah, it's, uh, a lot unknowns yet ahead of us, so, um. But I, I do have a direct line with, uh, Michael Paul. And, uh, and so I think it's important because that's probably where we're going to have to go through is the county. And, um, at least on the first level, so. Just want to try to keep everyone on the, uh, try to keep you up to par, what's going on, so. Anyway, that's, that's all I have. Well, if there's nothing else, are there any council committee meeting reports tonight?
My committee didn't meet.
Okay. The topics from the floor have been suspended. Number, number seven, Cassette Agenda for Acceptance, none. So we're going to go, uh, to the Cassette Agenda for Approval. And we have six meetings. Uh, before we start, has everyone had a chance to read through the, the packet? Pretty much?
I have, Councilman, I mean, Mayor.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna, I think it might be easier if I just take one at a time and I'll, I'll just read the, uh, the date on there. And if anyone has any questions, um, they could ask and then I can move on to the next one. Does that sound pretty good? So the first one, City Council Meeting Minutes for February 18th, 2020. Any discussion on that meeting? Okay, the next one, City Council Meeting Minutes for March 2nd, 2020. The next one, City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes, March 2nd, 2020. City Council Meeting Minutes for March 16th, 2020.
Mayor?
Yeah?
This is Councilman McNair. Could we, uh, step back to March 2nd?
Yes, of course.
Uh, this is a question I have for the city recorder. Um, I was late for that meeting, but I was present after you had me down as an absent.
Um, are you talking about when we made a motion to, or sorry, a motion was made to approve the agenda?
Yeah.
You, if I recall correctly, you walked in as that motion was being carried.
Okay, I see, I understand now.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with-
I have you in, under the attendance role as just being late.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay.
You can move.
Thank you, Counselor. Is that it, Counselor McNair?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with it, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. City Council Meeting Minutes for March 16th, 2020. City Council Meeting Minutes for March 23rd, 2020. And the last meeting was City Council Meeting Minutes for April 8th, 2020. Okay, no other discussion and questions about the, those six meeting minutes? Um, would anyone like to make a motion to accept these minutes?
Counselor Webb?
Yeah, go ahead, Dale.
I'll, uh, move to approve the Cassette Agenda for Approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. Did you get that information, Stephanie? Do you want to, if so, do you want to call the roll on that?
Yes. All right.
Thank you.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Did you say nay?
No, I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Is there any unfinished business tonight? Any unfinished business?
No.
Okay. New business. Staff report, OMS software. Stephanie, you, you want to go ahead and explain this one? We don't need any action on it tonight, but you want to just discuss that one?
Uh, yes, please. So did everybody have a chance to, um, read the staff report? Or would you like me to read it to you?
I've read it.
A brief summary, um, last year, the Budget Committee and then City Council afterwards approved the budget. And within that budget was, uh, funds to start a organ records management software implementation. Staff has been working for several months to, uh, find a good company that we wanted to go with for that, as well as to go through the contract service, um, or sorry, contract process. Uh, we now have that contract, but unfortunately I have to request them to update, um, a couple, uh, sections. But it has been approved by City Legal. And we are preparing to sign that contract and move forward with the implementation. It will be a phased project, which we anticipate it will take several years. Um, but we're very excited about it. It will put all of the city of Vernonia's records online, um, in a searchable, user-friendly database that's actually based out of Baker City. It's approved by the Department of Justice and managed by the Secretary of State's office. So it'll meet all of our retention requirements. And it'll actually enable us to keep some of our documents digital only. So that we'll relieve a lot of our storage space here, as well as redundant documents, um, and kind of some data control to make sure that we have accurate documents before us, as well as to make finding those documents much easier, quicker, and more, more efficient. Does anybody have any questions? I could go on forever, but I don't want to bore you to death.
Stephanie, this is Mayor Hobart, I have a question.
Okay.
Will, will this help us, uh, with our audit process and maybe cutting that back a day or two?
Yes, it should.
When we get audited?
Yes.
So it might save us some money doing that?
Oh, definitely, it definitely will. It'll save significant staff time looking for documents as well.
Right. That was my only question.
I don't need any action from anybody. I just wanted to let you guys know that this process was ready to be implemented.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor McNair.
Uh-
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, Stephanie, can you, uh, um, help me out a little bit and tell me what the initial cost for this?
It is $370 and some change every month.
Okay.
There's no onboarding fee.
Okay, thank you.
Hope that answered your question.
Yes, it does.
This is Counselor Wagner, I have a question.
Okay.
Is there, is there anything that's going to have to be done different to any of our documents in order to be able to implement them, to move into the OMS software system, uh, forms or anything like that?
As far as I'm aware, there aren't any changes that we need to do right now. Currently, staff has made PDF searchable and enhanced as they are. So doing that to documents in order to down, or upload, I guess, them to the software, it's already done. Um, but again, this is going to be a long process and there's going to be some learning, um, a lot of learning and some habit changes, I think, amongst everybody, really. But we've already made a lot of upgrades to our, our forms and documents. So I think it should be pretty seamless, or is that what I want to say?
Seamless.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
Stephanie, what's your estimated timeline to get it 100% complete? Um, because I know the police have struggled to get their documents, uh, switched over.
My anticipation is that it will take several years. Because, uh, that's not going to be my full-time job. We're not hiring someone to scan the documents. I will have help, uh, with other staff members, but we are, I mean, we're pulled away for things that happen every day in our, you know, meetings and minutes and, um, it'll be kind of a time filler. But I think as we get rolling, it'll become easier and easier because we'll get familiar with the software. But we'll start with some of the easier documents, like ordinances and resolutions and minutes and packets. Just kind of to get our, our feet wet, if you will, familiar with the software. But it'll take several years.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback a question onto your answer?
Sure.
This is Counselor Wagner, question, is this the type of thing that we would be able to utilize some of the seniors, or not just seniors, students from the high school who are required to do community service hours?
I would caution against it because of, because many of the documents that we hold here are confidential. And without somebody going through those documents prior to that person handling them, it might be more difficult. Um, I have sat through many roundtables with other city recorders. Uh, the city of Lincoln City, they utilized some help. I'm not sure if it was a part-time employee or a volunteer, but it was, um, almost more hassle than it was worth because they have to be babysat.
That brings to mind a question is, aren't most of our documents public records? I mean, I understand there are some things that are confidential, but primarily all of our documents are public records and can be requested at any time. Is that correct?
Correct, but every one of those documents has to be reviewed to make sure it doesn't meet an exemption that would make it not public record. So anytime I have a public records request, I have to read that document to make sure that it doesn't hold anything that's confidential.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Councilman McNair. I have a question for both the city administrator and, and the city recorder concerning this.
Josette?
Go ahead.
The convers, conversation that we had this afternoon concerning some of those records that were supposedly not, were, they were not able to locate in the issue that was before us down at the, um, development there on Knott Street. Would those, would those be the type of records that would be, be, uh, uploaded into this system?
Yeah, so the ultimate goal is that every public, every record the city has would be digitally held. So that we could just search and anything that is titled Knott Street, Nickerson, whatever, would populate into a thing. So in the future, when we have issues, we could type in a word, it would populate with all of the documents that contain that. And we could have the lump of documents right there at our fingertips. Part of the issue, and what Stephanie is talking about, why we kind of have to slowly get our feet wet is, with multiple turnovers of the different kind of heads of the city, filing systems changed, people's way they titled things changed, and we need to get into kind of a streamlined version and then streamline it as we're uploading it. So every staff member is going to get trained by, um, the software company on exactly how we need to do the, the uploading. We've currently already digitally scanned every large format, um, property plan, West Organ Electric, the school, the health center, VCLC, all those huge roles that typically just take up space and no one ever looks at, have already been digitally scanned. So we're just trying to make space so that the, once we get it prepared, all the documents the city owns will be easily searchable through criteria like that.
So just, just to expand, expand a little bit further on that. Um, when you say staff, do you mean the staff working in the, um, office there? Or are you talking about the entire staff?
No, city hall in, in the office here.
Okay, so one of the things that'd be dependent upon this was a, a need for a follow-through to make sure that, that all those documents do get uploaded when they're created.
When they're created?
Yeah, when they, when they're created, that they somehow get their, make their way into the system.
Yeah, so what, what Stephanie is talking about taking years is, is scanning and uploading the backlog, right? The current hard copies that are sitting in all of our filing cabinets.
But-
But she was talking about with the, with the behavioral change is that when I finish a document and I'm, she's putting it in a packet, it's instantly going up there into the cloud with the digital. Does that make sense? Once we start this process, sign the contract and get moving, the meeting packets would be up there once they're sent to you.
That, that answers the-
So that, yeah, the current stuff will be going as it's happening. It's getting all the old documents up there that's going to be harder.
Right, I was kind of thinking forward in terms of, you know, somehow something getting missed or not being, uh, uploaded into that system. And it gets lost, like evidently these documents did get lost back in 2000, um, or sometime in that timeframe. So, uh, that, I assume that's going to be a part of the training aspect?
Yes.
That answers my question.
Well, in that, in that case, Bruce, um, say I had a, a document today and it was, uh, it only was required to be held for two years. So it would be uploaded in two years. It would have a trigger set to where it- It would have a trigger set to where it alerts me that it is, has met its retention deadline. It's time for it to be destroyed. I request approval to do that. Then it gets deleted and there's a log. So it'll show what that document held, so what it was, what retention schedule it fell under, the dates, the date that it was destroyed and who did it. So there would always be a trail.
Okay. Well, my concern is, is that it make, it makes its way, once the document's created, that it makes its way into the system. If you're going to rely upon it, that it has to be, it's just like putting it in a filing cabinet. You know, I mean, it just doesn't get disappear off somewhere in the ether. Um, so again, you've answered my questions.
That's one of the fantastic things about this, um, implementing this software is that whereas we create a document now, it gets put into a filing cabinet. Then somebody needs to know that's where you need to look for it. Or in the case of significant sta- staffing changes in different styles of, of filing or if things were archived, then you have to go through every one of those boxes to find a document. Where with this software, if I'm looking for something that says Stephanie Bors either in the title or within the document itself, I can type that in, hit search and every document that has my name in it will pop up.
Thank you, Steph.
Mayor, I have one more question, please.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Counselor Allen here. Uh, this might be for Stephanie or Josette. Currently, it's three hundred and seventy a month. What happens if by the time we get half of our backlog in, they decide to raise the rate to, say, six hundred and seventy a month? What, what is our long-term contract on that? Price currently?
I will have to review the document, but my recollection was as more cities, um, local, you know, local governments of cities, um, counties, et cetera, as more sign on, our cost will actually decrease because the cost for them to support the program will be distributed amongst more, um, entities.
Okay, that sounds like speculation, but there's nothing in writing?
No, it is, but I, I don't remember all the terminology within the contract.
So it's a year-to-year contract, then?
Again, I'd have to look at the contract.
Okay.
We can, we can get that information then.
Okay, thank you.
Bring it back to you guys.
This is Counselor Wagner again, and just to confirm, this is a private entity doing work on behalf of the state, so that it's the state's archives? It's not, um.
Correct.
Chavez Consulting, okay.
Correct, it's the state's program. Chavez Consulting is who offers, uh, the support and they come out and do some of the training. Also, the state archivists will come out and do training as well. With the COVID, I'm not sure what that's going to look like. Um, but typically they come out and give you some training.
Stephanie, is this due to begin in, in July first? Um, because I see it was approved for our budget, so.
No, it's within the current year's budget.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah. Last fiscal year, okay. When do you expect to begin this program?
As soon as she sends me back the updated contract, we can sign it and move forward.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one more question there.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Sorry, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but are there critical, uh, information that you would still retain in a filing cabinet, Stephanie?
Yes, there are documents that will be uploaded, but because of historic value, we will keep a hard copy as well. For example, ordinances, resolutions, meeting minutes, items like those that will keep those hard copies here. There might be other items that we, or documents that we come across that we feel have historic or more value to keep a hard copy as well than strictly digital. And we have to request approval to do, to destroy documents and hold them only digitally. So items that are, say, they're permanent, we can request that they'll allow us to have them, but that doesn't mean that it would be approved, sorry. We can request that they allow us to have those digitally, but that doesn't mean it would be approved. So there are documents that will be required to have, um, both hard and digital copies.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the explanations, uh, Stephanie. So I'd like to move on to new business B, airport committee application. We have an application from a Richard Hollenbeck who lives within the city of Renonia. Has every, and, and he applied for, uh, an airport committee person. Has everyone read the application?
Yes. I have.
Okay.
I would like to note for council that this did not get formally recommended for approval by the airport committee because they were unable to meet. Um, and since then, they have had a member move out of the city and no longer have a committee. So that's why this one is before you because without this application, um, and approval, the airport committee is not able to meet even with COVID restrictions being lifted eventually.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie, for that updated information. I wasn't aware of that. Is there a general con- consensus from the council? For approval for a Richard Hollenbeck?
Do you have my consensus?
Counselor Webb's good with it.
Counselor Allen's good with it.
Counselor Wagner says yes, um, to consensus and I appreciate somebody moving into the community and wanting to get involved.
So with a general consensus, uh, to accept Richard Hollenbeck into the airport committee, it is my honor and pleasure to appoint Richard Hollenbeck to the airport committee on this fourth day of May, two thousand twenty. You know, you will notify Mr. Hollenbeck, uh, Stephanie?
Yes, I will send him a letter tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Police Department Chief Connor.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, I only have a couple of updates for you guys. Um, I wanted to let you guys know that last week we filled the blank, the vacant police position. We hired a gentleman, his name's Dave Brown. Um, once we are able to actually meet again, we'll do the formal meet and greet. Um, the other thing I wanted to let you guys know of, and you probably already heard about it, the police department and the sheriff's office served a, a warrant to the local residents recently in reference to some fraudulent bottle return slips. Um, we gathered a lot of evidence and there's several more suspects that still need to be interviewed and there'll probably be more, more charges in the future. And that was all I had. The next, uh, written reports I'll have out during the next council meeting to catch up the last couple of council meetings that there were none.
Okay, thank you, chief. Are there any questions for the chief?
I do, I have two.
Hey, Counselor Allen.
Yeah, Chief Connor. What did you mean by auto return? And my second question is, where's Dave Brown from? Can you give us a little bit of background?
Uh, the, the first one, the bottle return slips, they're, uh, the slips that you get from the, when you turn in your cans and bottles.
Oh, okay.
And Dave, Dave Brown is actually from Columbia County. Some of you guys, I think, probably met him as he was running for sheriff during the lax, last election.
Oh, yes, I did.
Oh, yeah.
Chief, this is, uh, Councilman McNair. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, I don't have a question of you right now publicly, but I would like you to, uh, give me a call. Um, my number is five, my new number is five three oh, zero nine three two.
Okay.
Nothing significant, I just want to chat with you.
Yeah, no problem. Are you around tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm around, uh, you can call me at, at, during the day, I'm at work. I can get you.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, moving on to number twelve, ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance.
I believe that one is mine as well.
Okay. It's ordinance nine twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Renonia reducing the speed limit on selecting, unselected non-arterial streets. That could be found on page twenty-one and twenty-two.
This came about, about, oh, it's probably six months ago, I think we discussed it last. Um, Missouri Avenue was one in question that there were a lot of speeding complaints. Um, we'd been waiting for an O R S to change so we could actually adjust that speed limit ourself. That O R S got amended in January, so that's why it's coming before you know.
Any discussion on ordinance nine twenty-three?
This is Counselor Wagner, I do have a question. Um, there is, uh, one of the lines that talks about how we may, the council may designate additional streets reduced from twenty-five to twenty by resolution of the council. Um, I am concerned about, I'm concerned a little bit about the appearance of doing a fairly broad-based ordinance while we are preventing public comment or have suspended public comment.
We, we left that, that line in there for future use, so in, in a case where we, we start getting more traffic complaint issues in other areas and it's determined that maybe the speed needs to be reduced, it would have to come back to you guys then, but we wouldn't have to write another ordinance for it.
I, I understand and I am not in opposition to this ordinance per se. I am simply concerned about the appearance of making, again, a very broad-based, sweeping, um, power of city council to do it at any time, simply by coming back to city council and saying, okay, we'd like to add this street. Um, again, without, without making it, um, that the public can really weigh in and, and have a say on it.
We, we could probably add some additional language that would require a, a, a public hearing possibly.
Um, I'm not even sure, this is Counselor Wagner again, I'm not even sure that I, I want that. I just, I'm thinking, is there a possible way of simply doing Missouri now and then bringing this back at a time when we are allowing public comment?
Only with another ordinance. But only with another ordinance. That's, that's what we're trying to avoid is multiple ordinances outlining the power of council. This is just giving you the power, you still have to do it by resolution, but you, if you take that line out, then you'd have to do each street by an ordinance, which has a different process and the thirty-day wait and all that.
Mayor.
And I, I, I appreciate that and I understand that. My concern, my question is, I'm not asking that for, to be forever. I'm just asking that during this hopefully limited COVID nineteen restriction, that we, um, we just, we're a little sent, more sensitive, if that is the appropriate term, to the appearance of what we are doing and what powers we are implementing within city council.
Mayor, this is Councilman McNair.
Just go ahead, go ahead, Counselor.
I recognize your concerns there, uh, Councilman Wagner. And, uh, I, I understand what you're, where you're going with that. But at the same time, I, I find it a little bit difficult to understand how in the past that we did not have the ability to adjust the speeds in our own community. Um, the notion that, uh, we, we wouldn't have escapes me. But evidently the state saw fit to, to, uh, carry jurisdiction on that up until this moment. So I, I, I'm not certain and I think, I think you're trying to say that it's really not, you're not talking about this particular ordinance in per se as that any ordinance that we'd be passing under the, under the certain situation. Is that a fair reading?
Um, this is Counselor Wagner, yes and no. Yes, I, I think that, um, you've touched on what my concern is. I don't have a problem with us doing our work and allowing our police department to do their work and our staff to do their work. I am simply concerned about, um, the appearance of our council making something that is going to last past this particular specific street issue and enacting it during a time when we are suspending public comment.
But in reality, we are not suspending public comment. Um, people have the ability to comment on this through normal course of business, um, anytime from this point forward. Um, I realize that we're moving forward with it tonight, but, uh, um, doesn't mean we can't rescind it. If the whole world came down and said, this is wrong, would you not agree?
My concern is that the agenda states public comment has been suspended. To me, if I was a member of the public and I wanted to weigh in on something, I would look at the agenda and it would say, public comment has been suspended, which means I do not, I mean, first of all, I would voice a concern about that. But to me, also, that might discourage people from commenting if they wanted to simply because they would believe that they can't.
Well, I heard your concern.
That said, I think this is very important. I think reducing the speed limit on Missouri is very important. And, and I apologize for maybe reading more into this than there is, but I just, after hearing all the noise out in public and throughout the country and the world, I don't want there to be any appearance of us trying to do something during a period of time when uh, we were, you know, enacting something because we could, because uh, no one was paying attention or no one was allowed to speak on it.
Mayor, can I say something?
Sure, go ahead, Josette.
So Susan, this really just gives count, is just reserving for council the right in the future to by resolution of the council, if another street warrants it, lower the speed limit by five miles. They still have to go through the whole public thing, it's not like you're doing this street and then next meeting you're doing five more streets under resolution, right? Would you not, I mean, so if the, if the, if the public could come and sit, you would like, when that's available for an ordinance to come through, reserving your guys' right to do this, that would make you feel better about it? On other streets other than Missouri?
No, I'm fine, I I think we should move forward. No, I, I, I have, I have simply voiced my concern and I, and I appreciate your explanations and I think we should move forward. And I appre, I truly appreciate you're allowing me to voice this concern.
But you didn't answer my question. It, would you rather, is your concern out of that the council may designate additional streets, you would rather that come back in a separate ordinance? If you had your way?
Under normal circumstances, I would say no. I would, my preference would be that this particular ordinance only address Missouri and that we revisit this when we can have it at a public meeting where the public can walk in or call in and weigh in if they so choose.
For the yet, for the additional right for, of the council?
Yes.
Okay. Chief, what do you think about that?
That sounds fine to me. I don't see a problem with going through the motions that way.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, go ahead, Stephanie.
You're wanting to adopt the ordinance designating the speed to be reduced on Missouri only, and then later adopt an ordinance saying that council could designate streets to be reduced?
Yes. Uh, this is Councilman.
Wouldn't it be procedural, procedurally correct to do the reverse and adopt the ordinance saying that council could designate streets to be reduced via resolution and then bring back resolutions for the streets to include Missouri?
That's great. If that, if that solves my concern, I'm happy with that. Either way, whatever we need to do to make this so that we are not simply doing something that broad sweeping tonight.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilor.
Um, I don't mean to take up a bunch of time here, uh, other people haven't spoken, so I'll try and be succinct and quick. Um, I would not agree to that. I think if this issue warrants um, action, and I believe it does, um, I think it's worthy of uh, moving forward with what we have here. I think that the uh, city of Vernonia should have the right to uh, set the speed limits in its residential areas at any time. Um, I realize, I understand the Councilman's um issues that she has with that, but I think that's mixing two things that, in my mind, this is not something that most people in my mind would disagree with. Um. That's just my opinion. I'll leave it at that.
This is Councilor Webb.
Go ahead, Councilor Webb.
Oh, yeah, I understand what Councilor Wagner's getting at here, these extraordinary times, uh, uh, and we're slipping something in here. Uh, I mean, because I think most of us were surprised to see it in our packet, uh, the citizens of this town have no idea that this is in there. Uh, I, I offer up a solution to uh, we table this out for a month and uh, ask our press to uh, put something in the paper that uh, we're looking at this ordinance. And then we, we get that public input, hopefully in the meantime, and then we could come back in a month's time and, and either adopt or not. And Chief Connor, uh, this probably has more pertain to school time.
Yeah, it's, it's, it does, there has been complaints even with nobody at school right now.
Okay, but that would, but probably the more emphasis because of school, because of the kids, and so we have a window of time here to get this accomplished.
Sure, and we can take as much time as it takes.
I would agree to that, Dale. I think you have a point there.
So I guess.
How many council meetings can we table it? We just table it one, don't we?
If you would like, you can table it until your next regularly scheduled meeting that you have in person, if that's what you would like, or you can do it to a date certain. Um, I would recommend to do the first meeting in June, that's a month away.
Hopefully we'll be able to meet in person.
I'm sorry?
Said hopefully we'll be able to meet in person then, because otherwise it kind of defeats the purpose. I think that the two councilmen's concerns are somehow the public is not going to have the right to, to speak on this. Um, I, I don't view social media as a, a valid form of communication. Um, I think that if uh, they want to speak about it, they come to a council meeting to speak about it.
Correct. My recommendation in that case would be for you to table it until the next city council meeting that is held in person.
Is there a general consensus with that recommendation from the council?
Aye. Council Wagner says aye.
It would be a motion.
You'll have to have a motion.
Oh, this is Councilman McNair. I'll go ahead and make that motion, we table this until the next regularly scheduled meeting in person occurs.
I'll second that motion, Council, Council Wagner.
Okay, if you want to continue with the roll call, Stephanie. The motion.
Councilor McNair?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Hey, there's no correspondence. Um. City Administrator report.
Okay, so I don't have a written uh, report for you guys that got out in your packet, but I just wanted to do some updating. Um. Rose Avenue project is going very well, they're done with sheet rock, um, mudding and painting, they're moving on to installing appliances and cabinetry and flooring. Um, the goal, the contractor thinks will be done in June, not July. So that's really good for our project, um, moving forward. Uh, the Chief and I did have a conversation and a conference call with the Vernonia Jamboree Committee, um, regarding kind of the, whether or not jamboree would happen this year. Um, they have tabled, given themselves two weeks to come up with a smaller kind of throwback to the old jamboree days, um, event. Um, we'll be discussing it again with them May eleventh. Um, and we're just kind of watching other festivals and how, um, other things in the county and surrounding counties are being postponed, suspended, canceled, and what that means. The goal would be that if the governor lifts the um, congregating restrictions, um, that potentially the different events would have um kind of like temporary fencing around them and ticket people that come in to watch like a one-day logging show or the Ridge Riders horsing event. Um, the tickets wouldn't cost money, but it would be a crowd control element. Um, there's probably short of a total list of all congregation restrictions, um, there's probably no way to do a parade. We batted around a whole bunch of different ideas. Could you change the route and make more surface area for people to stand or different things like that, and nothing really um, works if there's any sort of restriction still in place in the beginning of August. Um, currently, we're looking and I'm discussing, trying to get a hold of and to discuss with the Intercultural Society, the idea of Fourth of July, there's probably not going to be some sort of congregation event. But we're looking at maybe potentially still allowing the fire department to let off fireworks and that would just be a kind of watch it from your neighborhood or maybe in cars, it really just depends on how the phases go with the reopening of the state of Oregon. So those are things we're kind of keeping on top of. Um, Public Works has been working, the parks have never looked better even though no one's walking in them. Um. And the Public Works crew did take down all of the um, railing and decking around the snack shack and we're ordering the aluminum um, handrails and guardrails for the ADA ramp, so that should be done um, by the end of this month. Kind of a redo of that. We are also getting um all of the bathrooms that were currently just key entrance um, and locking, we have moved forward with getting the time locks on those so that we do not have to pass out keys and lose keys and change locks um, for different community groups. We would just reset the timing of when those would be open and shut depending on events. So that's good. Um, we're moving forward with the Collibarium, we're still getting concrete um, bids, if anybody knows a concrete contractor, they're super busy right now, so I'd appreciate it if you'd give me a name, I'll send them um, the packet of information on what we need. We've done the local ones, they're all swamped until July and we really need the concrete ahead of that for the Collibarium niche wall. And then I'm just working on um trying to get the danger tree in Airport Park down. I have two um, firms that are gonna, so far that are gonna be bidding, um, taking that big maple danger tree down in Airport Park and then still working on kind of a more lengthy different contract for the Hawkins Park um, trees because there's going to be a lot of cleanup that has to be part of that and trying to figure out what we could do to assist to maybe keep the cost down and then which firms that would have the capability to really clear it out in a quick and efficient manner. Um, I don't know, do you guys have any questions for me? That's kind of all the stuff I have uh, going on.
This is Councilor Webb.
Yes.
So on the, on the tree issue, are, are you gonna do another walkthrough with staff, um, Webway and around Vernonia Lake, uh, identify any further, you know, that we had some questions on some trees and and you were waiting to, for them to leaf out?
Yeah, so the those are probably gonna be their own contract. Because we've identified these ones with an arborist, those are kind of my first priority to get them down. Um. But then that, that wouldn't be very far behind, right? But we could, I mean, I could postpone moving forward on the Hawkins one until I open the Webway ones, but they're kind of two different mobilizations, so to speak, they're not kind of close to each other in, in timing, but if that's something council wanted lumped together to try and get a better deal, we could easily do that.
Have you talked to West Oregon Electric about those ones on Webway, if they'd be willing to uh, top them at least, or?
I, I haven't talked to West Oregon Electric, um, we ha, we're, it's a little contentious. Um, we're ha, we had a little trouble getting our transformer on time for the Rose Avenue project, so I'm happy to broach that subject again with them, but we just kind of got over something together, basically. But I'm happy to ask them, I don't know that, they've kind of got their guys on separate duty because of social distancing. We, to put in our transformer, we had nine different people and six different rigs. So it's kind of a big event when they try to bring out a crew to do something, but I can ask them.
I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Uh. Mayor, this is Councilman McNair.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Just to add to that, uh, when, anytime you're working up around a power line like that, uh, West Oregon Elec, Electric has an obligation to come down and, and assist in that manner. So.
Right.
It's part of their duty to do that.
Sure, make sure that what the, we're doing isn't going to harm their infrastructure.
If, if the tree has to go down and it's going to go across their power line, they have come, they'll come down and pop it.
Okay.
So. Anyway, that's been my past experience with them.
Josette, this is the Mayor.
Yes.
I want to say you forgot to mention the learning center uh, got painted and I want to thank you for that and, and you're getting that accomplished and, and uh, it looks really nice.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Um. Could you give me an update on the, on the two awnings again for the front and the side?
So I'm waiting to, um, I have one solid bid from an awning company in Portland, I'm waiting to um, see if Rick, it, they're kind of complicated, I have drawings of them, I have the old ones, we could use as patterns, but I'm trying to see if Rick Gardner also wants to bid um, to do it. The kind of issue with that was he had specific fabric he liked to use and we have specific fabric we want, so um, whether or not he can for a good price get his hands on the kind of um type of exterior fabric we want to use, we want to kind of go with what was up there originally, which is a sun umbrella or an awning type um, color fast and it doesn't fade and it doesn't um, do a whole bunch of stretching and stuff like that, so that's what I'm kind of waiting on to see. Once I get his bid, the lower of the bids will win out and then we'll just get that rolling.
Okay, I, I removed those and I, I took some pictures um, before I took it apart, so if you need those pictures to, for another application, I'd be willing to help out there too, so.
Okay.
Let me know.
All right.
Mayor, can I chime in on this for a second?
Yes.
Councilor Allen, Josette, has anybody thought about deleting the awning in the front? Personally, I don't see a purpose for it since there's an alcove and it looks kind of goofy.
Well, we have to have some sort of awning there, it's part of the downtown. It's part of the downtown, you have to have some sort of cover over the doorway. If you've ever kind of.
There is, there's an alcove.
Yeah, but that doesn't count. If you've ever looked at the other downtown businesses, it's part of the downtown code that there be something. Rick and I looked at doing kind of a smaller version, like a, just a angled roof. And then there were cheaper ones, but then that requires taking those down, patching the whole, kind of a, it's kind of a push with the amount of money you'd spend on the cheaper awning and installing it and then prepping from the old removal. But you have to have some sort of cover there. If you look at like Blue House and most of them have some sort of awning. Or the, it's in the code now, so that building fell within the 1999 code that required it. So some of them probably were grandfathered in without it. But that building being after 2000, it's a requirement for the city to follow their own code.
Okay, thank you.
They are kind of oversized for the building. I get what you're saying there.
Anybody else have any questions for Josette? Okay, I guess we're ready to move on to the action item summary.
Okay, so the two things I have are that staff is going to notify, oh, now I've lost his name, Mr. Hollenbeck of his airport committee appointment. And then we are tabling ordinance 923 until the next regularly scheduled council meeting in person. And I'm going to talk to West Oregon Electric about the Webway trees near the power line. Anything else?
Mayor, did we skip items from counselors or did I, was I sleeping on that one?
You know, I, I was sleeping on that too. I, I shouldn't have moved on quite yet. I didn't have any more to say, but I, I neglected to ask any counselors if they had anything additional. So let's back up to number 14 and if you want to, if you had something more to add, Counselor Allen, go ahead.
I did have one thing. I had a resident off of Texas. I had a couple adult beverages in him, but he came up to my place with pictures of the ditch that's flooding in his property and he's quite upset that nothing's got done this summer with it. And he gave me a bunch of pictures that I believe we've all seen before. And upon investigating a little more myself yesterday, I see there's a concrete culvert up Texas across from the Jehovah Witness Church and it looks like the water's supposed to drain through there, but maybe it's plugged full of rock. And I was hoping the city administrator could get Public Works during this hopefully slow time to see if that actually even goes anywhere to drain.
I can definitely get them to check that. They checked that. I believe I understand who you're talking about. He really wanted the stormwater that they put in on Arkansas to send everything down at the base between Arkansas and the alley behind, all the way to the highway, which there isn't natural fall there. So what he wanted us to do wasn't possible to do. And that's why there's the culvert that does go through. It does leak or send water across Texas by the Jehovah's Witness, down behind there to the alley that goes down behind the houses on Missouri. But we can definitely check. I don't believe it's full of rock. They've checked it pretty recently, like within the last month. So, but I can send them out there to check again.
Well, if I'm wondering if it's connected anything, why it doesn't drain?
Well, so the weird thing about Texas is as it goes uphill towards out of city limits, the water below Winning Stabs in that ditch has to reach a certain level before it hits that culvert because of just the topography. And so it, it does drain what comes down the alley and hits that corner there behind Winning Stabs. It does drain it across to the Jehovah's Witness side. What's happening is when the rock gets washed out in a heavy downpour, it sometimes diverts the water and it doesn't hit into that drain and it crosses Texas on top. One of the, Jeff and I have kind of went round and round. We did propose kind of coming up with a improvement district for that alley or some sort of chip ceiling for that alley so, at that bottom area so that the rock couldn't divert water. But it's a bigger project than just, you know, us kind of cold patching anything. One option we did discuss that might work for him in this next winter is doing a cold patch berm to make sure anything that gets across the street actually does not go to his property. But it's kind of like a one-off when that happens. It's not anything that the, that's misdesigned. It's that kind of Mother Nature's pushing rock down the street and then the rock doesn't let it turn to the right and get into the ditch. It sends it across.
Well, the ditch completely fills up and then it runs across the road all along that stretch at times, so.
Well, it hasn't, it didn't last winter. We have, we have documentation of that culvert actually working at that corner of Winning Stabs up at the top, going up Texas.
Well, he's gave me pictures that show differently.
Well, his pictures, if they're the same ones I have, are from two winters ago when he was really mad about it and it did cause some rock to, to wash out next to his shop. And that's kind of when they put, that's when they put across the one by the Mormon, or sorry, Jehovah's Witness Kingdom Hall there. So if they're the same pictures I have, they're from a couple winters ago.
Okay, we'll have to compare those pictures.
Yeah, but I can definitely have them double check that that is still free and clear and running. And one option that Jeff and I also talked about is putting some sort of a screening mechanism or grate if we're finding that when the rock rushes down, it's getting in there. It's kind of a weird area because the topography doesn't really lead to easy, everything's kind of a weird angle for the stormwater in that area.
Yeah, that pipe he put in last year is about three quarters plugged with rock that come down the back alley as of right now. So it doesn't take long to plug up the access flowing up Texas Avenue.
Yeah.
Anyway, I was just hoping there was something we could do. I didn't know if we've checked that pipe is clear or not, but.
Well, when they were, they were just up there about a month and a half ago putting in kind of some prep stormwater stuff on Arkansas and he, he came and talked to Jeff at that time and Jeff went and checked all the same things and tried to explain to him what's happening now with the new system and why we couldn't take it to the highway all the way along Arkansas there or along Texas. But I know that probably didn't satisfy what he wants done.
No, probably not.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, question for Josette. I had a phone call on our backflow devices that have to be recertified each year. Can you refresh my memory? Cause I, I think this came up in Public Works. It seemed, Scott Ruffrelle used to do that for the city. But we, did we choose not to get somebody certified to do that for a reason?
No, so we, previously, we've always had someone certified in it. The state law does not allow us to, the new, in state plumbing code, doesn't allow us to require something of the citizenry and then be a contractor they would have to pay.
Okay, that was.
We can't, we can't require it and be the guy that does it. And so they have to go, if it's the gentleman, I think, I know who it is because I talked to him and Stephanie also talked to him. They really need to go with, we gave them the number of the private company that does do those and has done them in the past for the different neighbors. And the neighbors really need to get together to try and do it. The city certifies someone, but they're only allowed to certify our own city backflow devices. We're not allowed to contract out.
Yeah.
I explained that to them.
Yeah, and, and this was actually with somebody else, so.
Oh.
Uh, yeah, and, and so it, it makes it kind of awkward for them all to get together, you know, know everybody, who's all on the list, you know, and get, get dates set and everybody, you know, group together and get one contractor probably lowers the cost. I'm just trying to think of how we could streamline this for them, but how many people do we have?
Um, I'd have to have Stephanie pull that and, and tell you the number of residential ones. But that, I asked Stephanie to talk to Legal today about whether or not we could give out that list to the gentleman that I was talking to because he's, in the past, he had contacted the different people in town that needed it done and, and kind of networked that. But we only know they need it because they're our customers. So we got to make sure we're not stepping over like some sort of confidentiality rule to give out their information to somebody else that they need it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand that point too, so.
We're checking on that.
Yeah, and, and at least we can provide a list of providers that, for these people that, you know, to help them out, but.
Yeah, so typically, we're not supposed to like, when people call and say, who, can you give me a concrete contractor? Because we don't really vouch for them, we're not supposed to tell them? We can te, it's the weirdest thing. We're like bound by all these kind of rules that I'm sure mean something because someone got in trouble for doing something wrong sometime. But, um, so we've tr, trying to been saying, trying to been explaining to them, okay, well, this is who did yours last year, you know, and, and this is their number. And not really vouch for any one company, but just say, this is who I have completed yours last year. Did you like their service? Maybe you should call them again.
Ms. Dale.
Yes?
Oh, sorry, Counselor Webb. If the citizens that received the letter would call the contact number on the letter to ask for more information, they would have been provided with the information that they needed. Being me.
Okay, but then are you saying you're, you're just giving them who they had last time that did it?
I can help by telling them businesses that have performed the service in the city of Veronia previously without giving any recommendations.
Okay, yeah, it just, this makes it kind of awkward, but I understand staff's attitude on this. And Josette jogged my mind on that state change, so, yeah, thank you.
Counselor McNair, did you have another question? I think you did.
Yeah, I was just curious. I wanted to address an issue with the city administrator, where we're at on the grandstand? And are we approaching that date?
So.
We haven't heard an update from the committee.
You haven't? There was an update requested at your last in-person meeting and then we've been to this remove, you know, separately. Yeah. So in reading through, and I remember during the time when we signed the agreements with them, they had 24 months once they got a C of O to hold an event. There's another clause in this section that says from this date, there will be an event held within, and I think it's 48 months. So I don't believe there's been movement for the repair, restoration. So that's why I'm trying to get ahold of Stacy to kind of get her prepared to at some point do a update for you guys. I don't know that unless you want to, I was waiting until it was in person. Because sometimes when everyone has questions and you're on the phone, that's kind of an intimidating way to present anything to anyone. But if you guys really, if the majority of council wants me to, I can try and get her to be on the next call for your next meeting with an update of kind of where they're at.
Well, I was looking, mine, my question was more informational, seeking information in terms of possibly, maybe if you had a chance to speak with her, if you did contact her, maybe she could give you a, somewhat summarize the issue, the situation and you can transmit that to us. I just remember that there was a timeline on it and I just know that the, and it's, the building's continuing to deteriorate, so, you know. We had a lot of movement there at once and then I haven't seen much, so anyhow.
Yeah, well, I can get her to either be on the next call or give us a written summary. I don't really like to speak for people, so I'd rather do one way or the other.
A written summary would be fine.
Okay. I know Counselor Wagner had asked for that when we were all in person a few, a couple months ago now. So I don't think it'd be any big surprise to Stacy that we want a summary of what's, what's up and how's it going.
Yeah, and I, I was in with Counselor Wagner on that too, asking the same thing. So anyhow.
Yeah, we can try and get that.
Does anybody else have any other things?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay.
Again, though, Mayor, I would like to thank you for your proactive efforts there, working with the state and the county. I think it requires a certain level of leadership on our part to not be fearful and move ahead safely, of course. But, um, the sooner we can get past this, the better off we are. And I'd also like, I'd also like to commend the city administrator for the work on this senior center. It just seems to be looking better every day you go by there. So I'm, I'm anxiously awaiting the grand opening.
All right.
Okay, if nobody else has anything else and you've completed your action item summary, Josette, I'll adjourn the meeting at 8:30 PM. Meeting adjourned.